Like to welcome everyone to a regular town council meeting and council chambers. We are also via Zoom on Thursday, October twenty sixth. May I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bragden.
Present.
Counselor Danforth.
Here.
Chair DuMay.
Here.
Counselor Higgins.
Present.
Counselor Mador.
Absent, excused.
Counselor McGowan.
Here.
Counselor Pelletier.
Here.
Would everybody rise? Please recite the pledge of allegiance with me?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Moniation under God.
Before we continue on with our scheduled meeting, like wish Counselor Mador a speedy recovery. He is in the hospital once again, so we wish for his safe and quick return. Also, I have a brief statement to put out for the public as a representative of the town of Millinocket. As we all know, yesterday, the world got a little smaller. His families all across Maine hug their children and their loved ones a little bit closer this evening. We Mainers can no longer boast that it cannot happen here. We are no longer exempt from the tragedies that we watch on TV. The rest of the United States has to endure. We, the citizens of Millinocket, grieve with our brothers and sisters in Lewiston and the surrounding communities. We pray for the protection and the safety for all law enforcement, first responders, and the medical staff that are involved. As we watch and wait in horror, we hope for a quick resolution without any more harm. As we lean on our faith, tragedies like these, we do not understand. We need to love one another, protect each other, protect yourselves, protect your families. As we now realize this can happen anywhere, even here. Let us take a moment of silence, please, to honor and show respect for those lost and those families suffering. Thank you. Thank you once again. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
We included a special presentation and made slight adjustments to warrant totals on orders number two forty-six and two forty-seven.
Thank you very much. Looking to approve the minutes for September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Motion made by Counselor Bragden.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor McGowan. All those in favor? Six zero. We do have an ordinance, number two, twenty twenty-three, public hearing. This is the second reading of the amendment to chapter seventy-five, general assistance code of the town of Millinocket. There will be a vote after this reading. Counselor Bragden, would you please read?
Ordinance number two dash twenty twenty. Ordinance number two dash twenty twenty-three, providing for amendments to chapter seventy-five, general assistance code of the town of Millinocket in compliance with title twenty-two MRSA subsection four three oh five four. Be it ordained by the town of Millinocket, in-town council summoned that the Millinocket Code, chapter seventy-five, appendices A through H, be amended per the attached appendix. It is further ordered that this ordinance take effect thirty days after its enactment.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Bragden, seconded by Counselor Danforth. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Via Zoom. Back to the council. All those in favor? Six zero. We do have a special presentation by Diana Furukawa, Millinocket Memorial Library Quarterly Update. Welcome, Diana. And please keep it within fifteen, twenty minutes. Appreciate it.
Hello, okay. Everyone, thank you for having me today. Glad you said that because when I practiced this, it actually took me twenty-seven minutes, so I will try to pare it down. I did cut out a few slides, so if it's a little different from what you're seeing in your package, just as I was trying to update it, we have a lot going on. So I wanted tonight, want to touch on our strategic plan, some program updates, and what we're doing to solicit back to steer our programs next year. A few updates about the building, although that is the area that I've cut down just a little bit sake of time. And I want to share what we're looking for for our twenty twenty-four operating budget. Feel free to stop me along the way if you have a burning question, or I can entertain questions at the end. So our strategic plan was completed between January and July this year. It was mostly an internal process with board and staff, but we did solicit some input from stakeholders like some town councillors and town manager, community members, and collected some data to help inform that plan. And I think it's really important because it helps us clarify what our priorities are for the next three to five years. We have a pretty broad mission to enrich lives, inspire imaginations, power community, and that can mean a lot of things. So it's great to decide what we're going to focus on, what that's going to look like, and make sure that we're all pulling the rope in the same direction. So there are five big ideas in our plan, and I'm just going to summarize what those and give you some examples. And I'll try throughout this presentation to kind of connect back what I'm saying about what we're doing to the plan. So first of all, number one, provide engaging and relevant resources and programs that enrich the lives of the greater Millinocket community. These are a lot of the things that you think of when you go to the library, making sure we have relevant collections that meet the needs of the community, aging programs for all ages, all that fun stuff, and quality customer service. Number two is a little bit more complicated, but I think it's kind of exciting, too. Something that we've realized that we're good at is community organizing. We know who the players are, who to connect to, how to market things. And we're excited about incubating ideas that are going to make this community stronger, healthier, and more livable, and providing that initial energy to get things off the ground, whether that's pickleball or the farmer's market, or piloting a resource navigation program and putting efforts into trying to get a social worker here long term, things like that. So we really see ourselves as a facilitator and a collaborator in that area. Number three, empowering our community by serving the town of Millinocket and the greater region as a keystone community hub. So there are very few public spaces in this region, and we are one of them, and we really want to lean into that and make sure that the space is functional, accessible, usable, and make sure that people know how to use it and how their group can use it or the business can use it during our hours and beyond that. Number four, this one is about making sure that we're reaching who we want to reach. It's about marketing and fundraising and participation. So that is what that one's about. And lastly, number five, probably the most boring one, but making sure that we have a sustainable library, that we are supporting our staff, give a strong board, that we're building systems and policies and managing risk so that we can be around in five years and hopefully in fifty years or more. So those are the five main areas of our plan. And I'll get into them a little bit more when I talk about the budget and our program updates. But are there any initial questions on those five big ideas? So just to show a few photos, one of my favorite thing to do, just share some of the programs that have been going on this fall. Summer tends to be a lot about kids' programs, about summer reading and all that kind of stuff, and the fall is often about adults. We've had some exciting fermenting classes in partnership with University of Maine Cooperative Extension, people learning how to can and preserve. And we've been able to use the St. Andrews Episcopal Church Kitchen to that work. We had a presentation on the aging brain. You guys need a minute, too, because I can stop. Okay. Seems like there's a game of telephone going on, which is fine. That's okay. We had a little book club on Grandma Gatewood's block with Partners for and our auction. So I just love to share those stories. And as we think about twenty twenty-four programs and where we're headed, feedback is really important. We really want to have a culture of constantly collecting feedback from the group that you use libraries. So this year, we did a survey and got responses from over fifty teens in our area about what they want to see, how they want to use the library. We did a survey of our summer parents and their parents. And we have an upcoming survey to keep an eye out for for adults on what kind of programs they want to see. And we're also planning a community conversation about accessibility. We want to understand how our space can be more accessible, our services, and in general, what do you make accessible? So stay tuned for that survey, and I just want to emphasize that we really do value feedback, and we use that feedback to steer what we're doing. What we've heard so far is people really want hands-on practical workshops and sessions. There's a lot of interest in author talks and music and poetry, cultural collectives, and outdoor activities. And some of the needs that we're seeing relate to, I would say, that the two that rise to the top are digital literacy and financial literacy. Those kind of questions come up all the time, and we're really excited to design programs and services that can help address that. Like this picture on the top is one of the financial literacy workshops we did this spring with Federal Credit Union, so a little bit more about kids. Video games are huge. We actually, I'll get into this later, but we do have plans to install a console downstairs. So let's talk about the building. We have functional electric vehicle charging station, which is really exciting. Someone was using it earlier today. The rate is is set at thirty-two cents per kilowatt hour. It's a little higher than the average, but we really want to set it a little higher just to start and make sure that we're at least being, you know, the electricity costs, all of the upfront costs, and always can always decrease it, but I didn't want to have to raise it later on. So yeah, go check them out if you happen to have an electric vehicle. Spread the word. This is kind of an area where there aren't enough of those, so we're hoping this is going to serve the visitors to the area and hopefully residents as well. And just a reminder that eighty to ninety percent of this was funded by efficiency and so really grateful for that rebate program. Question, yeah.
Thank you. Just real quick. Especially with the recent light of events that happen around Millinocket in the recreation area, in the high school area. Do you have any safeguards or at least video recording set on those stations in case any damage or vandalism happened?
Yeah, a video on it, but question. Yeah, working on getting better lighting. So building projects we're still working on. You may have seen my newsletter about plumbing issues we've been having. Seems like there's a section of our main drain that is slightly settling the term. So we're having that looked at. Demolition is supposed to begin next week with Brent Rollins, and the board has pretty much authorized, you know, use whatever you need to get the address. It may involve replacing part of the main drain or all of the main drain and our capital reserves that if we did. So yeah, we're really apologize for being closed occasionally when that happens, but we don't have much of a voice, and it's pretty hard to get a plumber in there to address it. Just mentioning the gaming console and stuff like that, we've decided to convert based in our basement into a teen's a lot of teens hanging out at the library, which is great. They need a little more space. They need a little more privacy, although there will be supervision. And so it's been really fun to gather their input on what should this space look like, what should it have? Some of the things on the list so far are a mural, a life-size cutout of Danny DeVito, which I think we can probably make happen. Make sure make sure that's in the minutes. You know, gaming console, bean bags, things like that. So I'm really excited that they're jazzed about it. We want them to help make it their own, and I think that's that space. Secured a couple of different grants that are going to help furniture and make some of those minor adjustments base and hoping that those are my building updates. Oh, one more elevator. Still kind of waiting to hear back on a congressionally delegated spending ask for the elevator, and we're in the process of deciding whether we want to modernize or fully replace. So there's some pros and cons on each side. But I'm hopeful that we can that project here. I'm going to skip ahead in the slides that you have just for the sake of time, and unless there are any questions about the building projects. Let's talk about the budget. I'll have a few slides about how we're doing in this year's budget, and then I'll tell you where we're headed next year. So we do have a different fiscal year than the town of Millinocket, as you all are aware. So as of this graph, seventy-five percent of the way through our fiscal year, and on the income side of things, we are a bit ahead of schedule, as you can see here for the total income. We're probably about eighty-five percent of where we'd like to be for the entire year. We still have our annual fundraising appeal coming up, and a lot of it just comes down to the timing of payments. So, you know, we did receive our quarterly payment to the town just in October. So in good shape on the income side of things. For expenses, we are a little behind schedule, which is good, and I think we'll end up being a little bit under budget. You can see the breakdown by category. You know, at or a little bit ahead of budget, or sorry, over budget for collection and community engagement. But those are relatively small categories, and we're a little behind on payroll just because we've had a little bit of turnover, you know, people being on that kind of thing. So we've been a little bit understaffed this year. I'm going to now move to our budget for next year. On the income side of things, we are hoping to bring in some more donations. We're expecting that we can this year, and just during that next year, we've been receiving more donations throughout the year, not just during our annual our amount from the friends of the library is staying relatively the same, slight decreases. And a new category that you'll see here is interest income. It's not actually new, but we're recording it in a different way. So because of our new Mac markets tax credit process, which is to fund our renovation, we have asset management fees that we have to pay, and we also earn interest income for that. And again, this is a process that's going to last until twenty twenty-six, and then we're able to solve it. But it's an obligation that we have as of the tax credits that funded the library renovation. So previously, we had recorded asset management fees and interest income and kind of did that together as one equation and just recorded the asset management fees. And so we've decided to separate them out. It's a better accounting practice, and that's why you see that here in the income, and you'll see higher-looking asset management fees and expenses because we haven't subtracted. So a little bit complicated. I'm always happy to explain that a little more in depth for those of you who aren't there for my presentation on that process back in the future. In terms of earned income or library revenue, I'm kind of excited about some new areas that we're trying to expand in that arena. We'll be doing retail at the library, selling T-shirts and stickers and beanies. People have been asking for these things. It's kind of easy, and we've been having success with that at the gear library, so we figured we'd try it out and help spread our brand. We have budgeted a small amount of income for the electric vehicle charging stations, again, being conservative with this being the first year. Our copy and pack services are staying relatively the same. And then we are also expecting to bring in some revenue from doing consulting work, facilitation for other nonprofits or collaboratives. Yes. Yeah.
Merchandising. Are you are you taking local options that that do printing for those things, or are you outsourcing out of the region?
We haven't picked a vendor. I did compare a couple of different quotes, and we're willing to look at local options if they're good. So yeah, question. We will not be selling Danny DeVito ads yet, but in terms of grants, you'll see a decrease here, and that's because we received a very large one-time employee retention credit grant from the IRS in twenty twenty-three, which is not going to be reflected in next year's budget. This is our third out of three years of Sewell funding at the one hundred thousand dollar level, and we should know by the end of the year what they would like their future commitment to be. We've had talks with them and with the council about that amount decreasing incrementally over time, maybe over the next seven to eight years, but I should have a more solid answer soon. And then lastly, we have our town funding, and I just want to thank you all again for approving the contract. It's been extremely helpful to know what we expect from the town and be able to plan around that. So that brings our total income to about three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which is about fifteen thousand dollars less than this year, probably mostly due to that employee retention credit one-time grant. Moving on to, oh, just to see that comparison over time, I think this really shows you how in twenty twenty-three, we had this one-time grant, and it'll be back to kind of where we were at in twenty and with the town funding increasing and donations kind of getting back to her. For expenses, we're seeing some increases in collection of materials. Cost of books has gone up, cost of shipping and magazine subscriptions and everything seems to be the same. So we're accounting for that. And for community engagement, which includes, you know, supplies and snacks for our programs, like that, we have proposed some increases. I think those are the types of things that the public really notices, like are there snacks at this event? Are there free tomato plants we're giving away? Are there those little things that make those programs special? So I think that's a worthwhile investment. And you'll also see the increase because of the retail items that we're going to be bringing. Facilities, this one is staying relatively same. Again, if there's a major project that happens with the sewer, that's going to come out of our capital reserves, not the operating budget. Increases to cleaning and plowing. Frankly, you just have to pay those people more than you did in the past, and I think that's good. We'll deserve a living wage, and we want to make sure that we're retaining folks. And you'll see, yeah, I've accounted for some changes to electricity just because of the EV charger. On the administrative front, not a whole lot of changes besides the consulting and asset management fee. I have put in parentheses rent. I know this is a little confusing, but again, with that new markets tax credit process, we have to pay rent this other entity, and they pay us interest. So that's kind of, but they're using it to pay us. So it's kind of both of those things. And again, this is only going to be in there until twenty twenty-six, solve that process. I'm happy to say insurance will have decreased because we were able to remove that redundant policy with the town by two to three thousand dollars. So that's administrative budget. And payroll. On the whole, the average is a five percent increase for staff to do cost of living adjustments and performance increases. I do want to note, though, that I think for better or for worse, it's a very cost-effective staffing model at the moment and how we do benefit. Don't actually offer health insurance. We do health insurance stipends, so benefits are about, on average, ten percent of full's wages as opposed to the usual thirty, thirty-three percent range. It's something we'd like to work on in the long term, but I still think it's pretty cost-effective as it is, and we want to make sure that we're increasing salaries for folks to account for that. You'll see there's negative net income, and that's because we did receive a twenty thousand dollar donation from Katahdin Arts that is unrestricted. We plan to use it for our operating budget to balance that budget. We received it this year, so we can't record it in next year's budget technically, but we plan to use that as over to help next year's budget. On the note of payroll, I just want to update everyone. This is our current organizational chart. There've been a couple of changes. Nicole Brennan is now our assistant director, which I think is a really good step in the leadership development and making sure that we're prepared for session planning and cross-training happening. We're actually in the middle of a hiring process for an operations manager who's going to be in charge of our circulation desk and facility and general operations. And we did have someone leave, and so there's kind of a new hybrid role. The program and resource coordinator is going to be doing some of that resource navigation work as well as program coordination work related programs like bringing Pennquist in to do those open hours and other public health and livability-related programs. Not all of these positions are fully funded by the operating budget. About four full-time staff are included in the operating budget. And then lastly, I will wrap it up. Oh, good. Just so you can see all those expense categories over time, you know, frankly, each category is in a bit. They won't increase forever, at least the administration. That one is is increased because of the way we were reporting the asset management fees, and that will after twenty-six. Some of the other ones will increase hopefully at more steady rates over time. I want, I feel like it's often hard to see, especially for categories like payroll. What does that mean in terms of our strategic plan and goals? So I just did a little exercise that I wanted to write. I tried to think about where everyone's time goes, where all of these expenses would be categorized and how they're propelling us to goals that I shared at the beginning. So when you split it out this way, you can really see that the majority of our resources are going towards selections and programs, creating those initiatives that are going to make this community better and more livable, and the community hub essentially to our building there and accessible, functional, sustainable. As opposed to the last two, which are not entirely overhead, but they're a little bit more what you might consider in that overhead category, the marketing and fundraising, the engagement and sustainability. And then further, I just want to share. I think this is important to see that beyond our operating budget, which are the records on the bottom, we leverage a lot of other restricted funds to further propel these things. So we're using our efforts to bring in additional funds from outside, like for the elevator, for example, or for Bailey's salary library run for the direct aid that we're renewing to distribute through the resource navigation program. Those things are not reflected in our operating budget, but they are possible because of that overhead and that staff time. So I just wanted to try to visualize that for you all. And when you see those added projects, the restricted grant, special projects included, you can see that percentage of overhead decreasing from the overall. So I don't know if that makes sense, but I just wanted to try to provide a that looks like action and how the strategic plan really does inform our budget and our work plan. So that's what I have for you tonight. I'm happy to go back to any slides have questions, but thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Counselor Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I don't have any questions. I just have comments, you know, questions because your presentation was just so well done. Excellent. And it's just really exciting to get your updates and to hear all that's going on and that you have a strategic plan and that you've tied everything back. I really appreciate seeing that. And above all, just the tremendous asset the library is to the town. It makes my heart sing. I don't know. I don't know if I've ever said that. I don't sing very well, but it's just, it's it's a joy, and I know there's so many community members that really appreciate having the library, and now to hear how much the youth are using it, that is needed, too. So you, the library in itself is filling a lot of voids and a lot of roles in in the community, and so I appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
You have a council comment or question? Counselor Bragden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several, but I don't think they're suited for here tonight. I have questions, concerns, and ideas that I'd like to bounce off you, so I'd like to meet with you at some point in the near future to talk about your presentation further. But I just want to say thank you again for the wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, and yeah, happy to chat.
Counselor McGowan?
Yeah, I just basically want to echo Counselor Danforth's comments. I always enjoy your presentations. They're very informative, very Yeah, I just basically want to echo Councilor Danforth's comments. I always enjoy your presentations. They're very informative, very thorough. And I just want you, I just want to thank you for that, and I appreciate the work that you're doing there.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. And the town manager is going to have a hard time following that one up with his town manager's report.
Hold on, let me grab my drum set. Not even a chuckle. He plays a starring role in my update this evening, so.
Going to get the drumsticks?
Yeah. Anywho. Let's turn that back on. I'm going to keep it fairly brief as usual. I, as usual, always encourage members of the public to visit Town of Millinocket website and view my reports in full. There's a lot more information available in the in the version online. So for this week's update, this is the second manager's report of the month. That's when we talk a lot more about the individual departments than necessarily what comes from my office. However, this one has a little smothering of both. Within Public Works, the necessary repairs to the station bridge, station road bridge recently pointed out by the DOT have been completed. These repairs will allow us to use the bridge for several more years while we develop a strategy to address a larger scale process, project where we will need to replace that bridge. This is something we've discovered has been communicated to the Town of Millinocket for upwards of five to seven years. So we're very happy that you know, we had the support from the council and and the ability to fix that right away. Once, you know, Brian and I were made aware of the situation where we're both still fairly new to our roles. The crew has been out stretching every last bit of our pavement budget that that we can to hand rake and and add more asphalt to patch areas of the roads and sidewalks that were in further disrepair than others. And they're also making pretty good use of that new pavement roller that replaced an ancient, more possibly more dangerous machine. And, you know, they're they're really just putting in a lot of extra effort to make sure we get as much fixed as possible while we're able to. Between the Public Works Crew and the Rec Department Maintenance Team, the new backboards and hoops have been installed at the basketball courts at both the Little Italy Playground and the Rec Complex. That Rec Complex Basketball Court, you'll remember, is the one that was approved to be resurfaced over the summer, and that work had been done. Rec Department Crew's been able to go around and and form the new ground around the outside of it. And, you know, get some, get some protection over it. So hopefully it lasts until spring when we can finish that project. They've also partnered on making sure the new signs for the baseball field, Carmen Crowley Playground in Little Italy and the Delahanny Field. They've all been installed at this point. They look wonderful. They've replaced some very ratty old signs that that certainly deserved replacing. They're all of good importance. A cemetery will be closing November first and will reopen in the spring. I'm going to jump down, talk about code enforcement. Most important update there that I am very happy to bring to your attention is that our online code permit application portal is live. I'm going to screen share and give a little walkthrough of how that works. So we jump online and we go to millinocket.org. Right up here at the top, we have our government tab. Drop down the fourth one on the column there, it's code enforcement. Right here, the top link on the page, we do have to remove this coming soon memo there. But there's online permitting link. This will go to the Town of Millinocket's online code enforcement permit application page where you can see you can file applications for principal structure if you're building, you know, a house or you can do your alteration permit if you're, you know, moving load-bearing walls or making major renovations to your home. Electrical permits, plumbing, you know, it's all here. You're going to put up a fence, fence permit. So you click on the individual permits and it brings you to where you fill out your information, everything from your contractor to address, the owner information, details of the project, what type of occupancy the property is, whether it's business, commercial, you know, store, residential. Gives you a place to sign and on those where it is necessary, there is a spot where you can click to upload PDF or JPG file. You can do a picture of the property or, you know, if you have one saved on your computer, if you have it sketched out, you can add that and that'll help speed up the process. And then you click submit and that pings our code enforcement officer where they have a dashboard where they can inspect it. The one step that is missing currently that will be updated hopefully by the end of next week is the payment portal. That will be live very soon and allow folks the opportunity to pay for these online, also making it even that more, much more convenient. Another useful tool that is included in this page, a couple of them actually. This top option up here where you can search for permits, if you've if you've submitted a permit application, you can click search existing permits. You will have received a permit number. That time you can type it in up here and you can search and see if you're what the status of your application is. Has it been viewed? Has it been approved? You know, you can get updates in there and research other permits. You may have the number for there. The other item. Another opportunity we have on here is a space where you can submit a violation if you wish to. If there's a legitimate code enforcement concern that needs to be addressed. This is an opportunity for you to file that information here within submit a violation. And, you know, we encourage people to be respectful with this form. We understand that there's a lot of work to be done throughout our community and we are tackling it at the fastest pace we are able to with the staffing that we have. But this is an opportunity for folks to make use of that. And then in the future, we have this option down here where you can view from a map. When we are at the point where we can where we can go live with our tax assessment, the assessing page, the online assessing information that will be linked to this. So they will both talk to each other. So you can not only on that map, you'll be able to see the assessing information, the value, the picture of the home, you know, that sort of stuff. You'll be able to click a link from there to see what permits have been approved for that property, you know. Most often, those features are taken advantage of by realtors or people looking to buy a home in a certain market. This is, you know, this will, this will catch us up to folks that have been, you know, towns that have been doing this for twenty, thirty years. So it's it's an exciting opportunity for the Town of Millinocket to jump into the current world. Very excited about that. Happy to talk to anybody about it or give some further tutorials. And you can always contact the code enforcement office right here at the town office as well. I'll stop screen sharing and head back to my report. Within the work of the Community Initiatives Director, she is in cahoots with the Arakataan team and several others on a new project called Christmas Tree Santa. There's a more information to come to that. It's a very interesting and creative idea that was brought to her by somebody on that team. And we can't wait to start advertising it. So it's 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 very cool. Please start getting excited. And then we plan to have her, myself, whoever's available with a presence at the holes, probably on the exit line, I think is where it's most appropriate. We're going to be continuing to encourage folks in the community to sign up for our email correspondence, the Magic City Monthly, the other email and text updates for important information from the town that we disperse periodically. Out of the town clerk's office, we do have the upcoming election in November. That's November seventh. We have the seats that are expiring for two thousand twenty-three would be Councilor Braggman, Councilor Danforth and Councilor Pelletier for the for the town council. And then on the school board, we have Donald Raymond and Tom Malcolm. Both of their seats are up. And on the municipal election ballot for the town council, three-year terms, the candidates on the ballot will be Jane Danforth, Gail Mackin and Louis Pelletier and Gilda Stratton. For the school board, the three-year term seats will be Julie Huke, Tom Malcolm and Don Raymond. That is Julie Huke-Mador, Tom Malcolm and Don Raymond. Other really important stuff from the town clerk's office, the two thousand twenty-four dog tags became available. So please start coming in and licensing those dogs. Fees are six dollars for spayed and neutered, eleven dollars intact. And once February fourth rolls around, we're looking at a twenty-five dollar late fee. So you have several months to start coming in here. Ah, February first, thank you for the clarification. You know, also mentioned in here is that there is one full seat available on the Personnel Appeals Board. It is not it's not a board that is all that active, thankfully. There's there's not a ton of work involved, but it is a very important board when when the time comes around. So we encourage those with some interest in performing civic duty to submit an application if you're interested to fill in on that board for us. With fire and ambulance, the Chief Cody and the full-time crews have done some hazmat decon training with partnership with the Millinocket Regional Hospital. They provided some fire station tours and school visits during the month of October for fire prevention. It was actually pretty rewarding to be able to join them one afternoon while the group was there touring. My my four-year-old son was over there with his class, got to see everybody and climb in the in the trucks and stuff. That's always fun to see the the kids light up over there. They get really excited. Chief Cody was awarded a grant to provide firefighter one and two class right here in the Katahdin region, starting in early January. That's a big deal to have that class offered locally, and I think that we have some pretty good attendance expected for that class. Am I right? Yeah, that's a huge opportunity, you know, that that a significant amount of money that that goes into providing that training to folks. And we're very happy that John's so proactive in in getting those trainings held locally. And then, you know, he and myself, East Millinocket PD and Panopscott Emergency Management are working on emergency planning for the marathon. We're expected to meet again tomorrow morning via Zoom, and that discussion continues. I'm going, I would like to invite the airport manager up for just a couple of minutes. He had a wonderful experience at a conference this weekend, this past weekend, and I'd like to see if he has a little bit to share, some of the special recognition that Millinocket Airport was was given this weekend in Massachusetts.
Port Manager, Three Juniper Street. Little background on the video that he's talking about, the presentation he was talking about, back in the spring, just before I had my first knee replaced, our engineering firm and planning firm that does all the work for the airport for our grants and everything else, Hoyle Tanner and Associates. The Vice President of Hoyle Tanner approached me and and wanted to talk about doing promotional videos for the airports that they oversee or help with these projects. So he said, we haven't done any yet. I think I want you to do our first one. So I'm like, well, public speaking is not my thing. I plow runways and I mow grass and I pump fuel and stuff like that. He says, no, I think I think we can work through this, and I think it's a big, it's going to be a big deal. He said, I really think that we should do this in Millinocket. We got projects upcoming and this might be a good boost for your operation in the town. So I reluctantly agreed to it. And then I had my first knee replaced, and when I got better, first of August, the film producer, the lady that their their promotions department showed up at the airport and we filmed for a whole day. We worked through the script back and forth and we filmed everything. And Lifelight happened to land, National Guard helicopter happened to land. They got me pumping jet fuel. We needed a small airplane to fly around and then fuel. So I jumped in an airplane and I flew around for the video. So the little purple airplane in the in the video is me flying. And then when it was all done, I didn't hear anything for a while. So then I had my second knee replaced and a long story short. The video came out and Peter also collaborated in it. The manager collaborated in the video. He can, he has a speaking part in it and everything. It come out real, I think it come out really nice. So then he says, well, now I want you to go to Massachusetts, to the Massachusetts Airport Managers Association Conference, their annual conference. And I want you to present this video to the conference. FAA was there, a whole bunch of alphabet soup, soup acronyms were there. I mean, all the big, all the big wheels of the aviation business on the East Coast were there. All suit and tie, the whole thing. It was just very intimidating to me being from the woods. So they said, your slot is forty-five minutes. I said, what am I going to say for forty-five minutes? You know, again, I plow runways. So the lady that produced the video was there with me and she, I gave an overview of the airport, the history of the airport and everything that was done, my experience filming. She went through the whole process of how it was produced, how it was filmed, how we worked through the script and how all that was done. And then they played the video, two screens full of people, and they played the video. It was really overwhelming for me. The crowd came alive at the end of the video. They were clapping and everything was cool. The FAA got up, asked questions about the video, what they thought about the future of the airport and how often do they think these videos need to be made? And they were really on board with it, a real, I mean, honestly, a real highlight. One of the highlights of my career. It was, it was very nice. So after the video was presented and everything was all done and I was headed back to my seat, the FAA came over and talked to me privately, another group talked to me outside. So now the district chief of the FAA that works out of Burlington Chief of the FAA that works out of Burlington, Mass, she is now planning a visit to Millinocket so that we can talk about our runways. And our terminal building and everything else that we've been trying to work on. So, again, as you can hear it in my voice, I was very overwhelmed by the experience. You know, it was, it was. Pretty, pretty impressive, I think. So anyway. That's what, that's what we did with that video. And I know you shared it on Facebook and I know you, you've seen it. So yeah, you've, you've seen, you've all seen it. Okay, good. So that was, that was my experience and we're gonna get some uh, some more recognition by the FAA when they stop by here after I get back from vacation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Manager, if I may, um, do we have the video present? Is it, uh, I think I've seen it. It's not extremely long.
Three minutes, I think.
I think for the benefit of the public present, um, and those that may not have. The ability to at home, I think it'd be pertinent if you show the video for those in attendance today.
Yeah, yeah, I'd do that. Well. No, it's fine. I'm just, uh. Yeah, I'm just, just had to, uh. Well, that's. Certainly make us. Certainly make us proud there, Jeff. That concludes my manager's report for the evening. Any questions, comments, we're happy to take.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions or comments from the council? Council Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Jeff. That was very interesting. It was detailed. Appreciate it. Um. Thank the report, Mr. Manager. Uh, one of the questions I've got. It's the, and this is the first I've heard of it. So is the leaf bag collection. Now, the leaf bags, do they have to be papered? Do they have to be plastic or?
Well, I, I know that we did it last year as part of a cleanup. Um, I'm gonna have to re- report back on that.
Well, I appreciate it. Well, I just, I didn't hear about it. So it was new for me.
Sure. Yeah, no, I'll, on, when do we meet again? November thirteenth? To Monday. Uh, that was another part of my report. I'd like to just mention right now is that in the month of November. Following the election and then following Thanksgiving, our um meetings take place on Mondays. So no, our upcoming meetings will be November thirteenth and November twenty-seventh. Uh, but yes. At, um, at the meeting on the thirteenth, I will definitely be able to let you know that.
Thank you.
Sure. And probably in the meantime.
Thank you, Council Higgins. Council Bragden.
Uh, I have a couple of things that I have highlighted that I wanted to get updates on. Uh, the first one being is the one that I ask almost every meeting that we have is the update on the recycling issue. Have we seen an improvement since the last time we talked and are we officially making any money off the product that we're getting?
Uh, no and no. Uh, that. Will segue into a larger conversation we'll have to have in the near future, um. About the cost of operating that facility um compared to both the lack of participation. And the. Current availability to make profit off that material. Um, and basically how. How picky um the facility can be uh with uh entire bundles of. Um, bales of material that we can provide to them, um, whether the council feels um. It is lucrative in terms of a community service to offer, um, or. Considering it a revenue stream. So we'll, we'll be talking about that more in the pretty near future.
Uh, second question I have, uh, I haven't asked in a minute and I know there really wasn't an update last time I asked is cameras for the brush pile. Cemetery, et cetera, et cetera. Has there been any more movement?
So we had the bid, uh, we had the RFP posted on. Um, the website and uh in the paper or wherever else, um. The only. We received one response from it and it only. So far has included coverage for. The only official bid that we received included coverage for Veterans Park. Um, so I've been in. Communication with that vendor, um, the one who provided us more information earlier on about. The different options, um, trying to see if we can encourage them to, um. You know, maybe place bids for the other locations as well. I'd like to do them all in one fell swoop. Um, so that's kind of an ongoing discussion. Um, if the council feels they'd like me to address the one partial bid that, that we did receive. Um, I'm happy to do that as well.
Personally, my biggest concerns that I've mentioned in the past is the cemetery and the brush pile. Um, you know, Veterans Park is well-let, tons of traffic and those two areas we've had in- instances in the past. Um, so I agree with the direction you're currently taking. Down my left. As for the personal appeals board, you will be seeing two applications coming across your desk in the near future. Um, as a promise I made that I would continue being active to the community.
Wonderful.
And lastly, um, I want to thank Jeff for your hard work. The video was amazing. Uh, regardless if you feel like you did good or not, you did do good. And I'm glad to hear the, the progress that you're making with the FAA. That's all I have.
Thank you, Council Bragden. Any other council comment? Uh, I just have one and it's kind of like an addition and a segue to something that you alluded to, um. There's just information to the public. I welcome, and I spoke to a couple of business, uh, business owners this past week. In reference to street closures that they were unaware of. And I, um. Spoke to them and I encouraged them as well to view the town website. Not everything can make it on the Facebook page and, um. So, um, I would encourage. Business owners to check out every two weeks. We have, um, council meetings. Um, if you can't make a meeting, I encourage you to check out the agenda. Simple, you just go online or come down to the clerk's office, check out the agenda, see if there's anything pertinent on that agenda that would be relevant to your business. Um, I think that's to encourage business owners to, um, to view the agenda and. Take some of the onus to put it to, um, to see if the street's gonna be closed. And, um, or if anything is on the agenda that's going to affect your business, I think it would behoove you to do that, Council Bragden.
You dragged a question I had, um, the beautiful sign that we have out front. Is there ways to communicate street closure in the future on those signs? So people are more aware of what's going on.
That would, that would be a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
So there, there are things that we could do better on our end with spreading information. And there's also things that the community could do better as well. So I think that, um, I think it's a learning experience. It was a, it was a one-off, um. Think we can do better all the way around. That's all I have to add, Mr. Manager, if you wanna.
I would just add that on top of. Uh, viewing the agenda on the website or coming in to get a copy of it, um. Should they be signed up for our email and text communication, the agenda is sent out um automatically. Every time, um, as soon as it's available for the public, it goes out through our constant contact program. To everyone that's on our email or text list, um, and they can get it sent directly to them and, and be. In constant communication about what business is being taken up by the town council. Uh, which includes road closures, um, even if they are, uh, in that instance, um. Privately held events by, uh, non-town organizations.
Absolutely. Yep. Thank you. Thank you for adding that. That's all I have and I'd like to go down to the public. Any public comment on the manager's report? He is own, saying none. Are you trying to speak?
To inform. So then the November, um, Monday meeting is the organizational and regular. Um, town council meeting. So, um, that is a seven o'clock start. I just wanted to put that out to the community ahead of time. That is it.
So the next meeting will be after the elections.
That is correct.
On Monday.
Correct. This is the, this is the last full council, um, meeting for you guys to join. You will join briefly for. The, the war, the regular agenda, which are the warrants, because those are the current sitting council members to be on the warrant committee. Um, and then after that, we'll go into the organizational for the. Just wanted to put that out there, just a little more information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for your report. All right, moving on to order number two forty-six dash twenty twenty-three. Council Higgins, would you please read?
Hey, Mr. Chair, ordered number twenty-two hundred forty-six, twenty twenty-three. Writing for execution of the town warrant for October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered that town warrant for October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. In the amount of. Hundred one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, second by Council McGowan. Any heavy hitters on this one, Council Higgins?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Three thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars and ten cents for ambulance billing. Five thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. That's for, uh, Blumer Russell, Bo Payne. That's legal. Uh, one thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents, Carquest Auto Parts. Two thousand, two hundred and six dollars and thirty-nine cents, FireTech and Safety, that's supply replacement. Uh, eleven thousand, ninety-one dollars and ninety-five cents, General Brothers, that's roof repairs. Break three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven, Oil Tanner and Associates, that's for the runway engineering. One thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-two cents, high-grade business, that's for the tax, uh, equipment upgrades. Fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-three cents, Municipal Waste Solutions, that's waste disposal. Three thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents, Northeast paving, that's for the paving. A thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Fine State Elevator Company, that's elevator repairs. Three thousand, forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, Prepa Oil, that's oil for heating. Four thousand, five hundred dollars, RH. R Smith and Company, that's the auditors. Ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-six cents, that's for some power, that's for the street lights and some of the building lighting. Uh, eight thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars, and that's right sporting goods, that's for the basketball court and equipment repairs.
Thank you, Council Higgins. Any council comment on the order? Seeing none down to the public. He is zoomed back to the council. All those in favor? Six zero. Order number two forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Yes, order number two forty-seven, twenty twenty-three, provided for the execution of the wastewater warrant for October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered the wastewater warrant for October twenty-six. In the amount of nine thousand, fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, second by Council Danforth. Any heavy hitters on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Two heavy hitters, two thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents, the Towne Millinocket. Four thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents, and that's for some power.
Thank you, council comment on the order? Seeing none down to the public? Be a zoom back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number two forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three. Counselor Pelletier, would you please read?
Order two forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three. Providing for. Approval of certain parking space closures, Municipal Parking Lot, Penobscot Ave. Is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the following parking space closures as needed for safety concerns. Close four parking spaces at the Penobscot Avenue Municipal Building Parking. Lot adjacent to the old Wilson Block. Note, request from Health and Safety Officer attached.
Second. Motion made by Council Pelletier, second by Council Bragdon, council discussion on the order? That's your bad fourth.
Thank you. I just have a question, I guess, for the manager, so I'm assuming this is just temporary while some construction's going on, just based on the note that was provided for this order?
Yeah, this is uh, temporary, we have, um, not we, but there's a contractor over there actively. Um, working on cutting out and remodeling the interior of the uh, upstairs of that building, um, so. This is just out of precaution and safety for cars pulling in out of that parking lot. We'd like to just make it safer for everybody.
Not only that, Mr. Manager, I, I believe after speaking with um. With Tom Malcolm, that we are also li- liable if somebody. Uh, damages, has damaged property or on their vehicle or whatever. Um, if we don't close those off. Where it's the municipal parking lot.
It's a very good point, I'm on.
That was my question is, somebody pops a tire because of.
I'm on. I'm not entirely certain of that, uh, if that was the information provided by Tom, I trust it. Um, I think that some liability is on. Uh, maybe the hands of the property owner that's creating the work or, or the contractor themselves, um. It's a very good chance that.
Yes, I just, I'm in favor of it. I think it's very proactive and I thank you guys for doing that. Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public? Be a zoom back to the council, all those opposed? All those in favor? Arrow?
Making sure we're awake.
Hey, it's my last time up here. All right, um. Order number two forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, Council Bragdon, would you please read?
Order number two forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, providing for authorization for the town manager to send the charter review committee's proposed charter changes to legal council. Whereas the charter review committee has met over time. And extensively discussed the Millinocket Town Charter, offering suggestions for edits and improvements along the way. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council authorizes the town manager to send charter review committee's draft. Of proposed changes to legal council for review, requesting an opinion on the appropriate path forward to officially update the document.
Motion made by Council Bragdon, second by Council Higgins. Council discussion on the order, Council Bragdon.
So, after hearing several. Citizens and reading an article in the paper today. I want to point out the very end of this order where it says. Legal council for review and requesting an opinion on appropriate path forward to officially update the document. There is a belief that we are not doing this legally and I one hundred percent disagree. And that is the point that I'm trying to make tonight is that legal will tell us what we need to do. Uh, to move forward with this. There is no definitive answer. As suggested with certain comments on Facebook, the paper. And uh, comments made to me personally, I just really encourage people to do their research before they. Make comments like that or suggest that we are doing anything illegal or making a post. On top of that, this entire process, we have begged and pleaded people to come and make comments to us. And the fact that people have the audacity to say otherwise, you never ask the public. For information or advice is, is completely astounding. A lot of the changes we made in this document, we had members of the public that are sitting. On the committee as members that had made the recommendation for the changes. And as mentioned in the presentation that we had last time, one of the public members stood up, uh, Mr. Wally Paul. And stated there was many debates that we had in times that we spent. Two to three meetings discussing, researching, looking at state ordinance and law. And even uh, adjourning without a definitive answer on how we were going to move forward. So. On top of that, I think legal will advise us the best direction to take and will, will tell us what we need to do. And before anybody decides to make a comment again on, we're not doing this legally, I'm sure legal will tell us if we are or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bragdon. Any other council comment? I do have one. Um, very brief, although there are. Things. And the changes that you went through um, in your presentation in the prior week, uh, prior weeks, I'm sorry. Um, that I. Some I agree with, some I don't agree with the changes, some I'm lukewarm to them personally. Um, but I trust the process and I will support this to move forward so legal can examine it. And then when it comes time to vote on those. If that ever comes to this, and then I'll make those recommendations at that point. Uh, for myself as a personal counselor. Other than that, I will go down to the public. Anybody that would like to speak on order number two forty-nine? Name and address, please.
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. I also read the letter. I have not seen. Uh, this week's paper, um, and I was. To put it mildly, a little irritated myself, um, because I agree with Council Bragdon. Um, everything was done in the open. Uh, we begged people to participate either in person or through Zoom. Um, I believe we had one interested party that did that, um. Oh, okay, three, uh, sorry, my mistake. Um, and it does irritate me that, um. People sit back. And then make judgment on uh, things that they really have no knowledge on. They may think they do, they do not know why certain decisions were made. How much time was put into those decisions and what votes were taken, what was said within the committee? I also do have one question now. Because I'm a little confused on the process. It was turned over to the council. Does the council make or has the council made any changes? Before it's going to legal? No, thank you.
Welcome to a little slice of public service. Council Bragdon.
I was just gonna touch on her comment and, and add that all of our committee meetings are recorded online. I am a little bit behind. Most of them are up. There were some technical difficulties, I think, on maybe one or two that were not posted. Um, but most, if not all of our videos and minutes are posted online for anybody to read. And I have it broken down by change. How many changes were made per section? What input was given? Who voted on what? Uh, to make it nice and easy for anybody to read or listen to. Um, on top of that, to your comment. The council made no suggestive changes to, to me or to Louis, to my knowledge, or to Bob. Uh, so no changes have been made to the draft that I presented or to the copies that everybody has. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bragdon. Any other council comment? Still down in the public? Be a zoom. Seeing none back to the council? All those in favor of order number two forty-nine going to legal? All those opposed? Six zero. Five zero, are you abstaining? Five zero one. All right. Order number two fifty dash twenty twenty-three, Council McGowan, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number two fifty dash twenty twenty-three. Providing for approval to increase the computer support FY twenty-four budget. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves transferring thirteen thousand thirty-five dollars from the undesignedated fund balance. To the administration computer support. E zero one one two dash one 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 two budget to cover the new service agreement cost increase.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Bragdon, council discussion on the order? Mr. Manager, uh, where there's no backup, could you please give us a brief description on why this money's needed?
So, two weeks ago, we awarded the sole bid uh, for IT services. Uh, from our current provider, uh, the cost of doing business is increased um, monthly. So, uh, this will cover us, um. For the, you know, necessary cost of the contract to the end of the fiscal year, um, and then we will. Uh, budget appropriately moving into next fixed school year, starting in July.
So it's solely because of their price increase to us, that's why we need that?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
New price increase with a new contract.
Thank you. Um, down to the public? Be a zoom, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number two fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Yes, order number two fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three, providing for approval to increase the elevator maintenance fiscal year twenty-four budget. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the payment of a Pines, of a Pine State Elevator invoice. For nine hundred and seventeen dollars as there's not sufficient budget to cover this expenditure. And is further ordered the Millinocket Town Council approves increasing the municipal building slash elevator maintenance fiscal year twenty-four budget. E zero one zero eight dash one nine one zero from five thousand to ten thousand. This increase will leave an unspent budget of four thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents after payment of the Pine State Elevator invoice.
Second, motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council Bragdon, council discussion on this order? Mr. Manager, same question. You explain the increase.
Yeah, um, so. You know, we don't have a crystal ball is the, is the, you know, recurring theme in these cases, but. Um, really it comes down to, we had expected our modernization to be completed by now. We didn't expect. Um. An increase in maintenance costs in the, in the meantime, um, the. Final twenty-five thousand dollars that we're uh, expecting, if you remember the conversations earlier in the year. Uh, to complete that modernization depends upon um, finalizing the lease with the um, state. Judicial branch for the, uh, the court to occupy the space during the week. Um, we. It's taken longer than expected um, to finalize that agreement and we expect to have it done in the near future. Um, however, we do need to take care of these costs as they come. It's a crucial access to our building to have. Um, have that, so again, just, just no crystal ball and, and uh. Unexpected troubles with the timeline um, of that court lease to be finalized.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Manager. Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public? Be a zoom back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Reports and communications, more committee for November thirteenth. Twenty twenty-three council meeting will be Council McGowan and Council Pelletier. And Chair Committee Reports. Council Pelletier or Council Danforth?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so there will be an age-friendly committee meeting next Thursday and that's November second. It's gonna be two o'clock at the library in the think tank room. Um, and the nature conservancy will be part of the agenda. They're gonna give um, a presentation about an all trails, um. All abilities trails project they're working on and they want feedback and for, let us to know about that, so information is on uh, the website, there's. Attend in person or by Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Any other counselor, Council Pelletier, you all set?
I'll just jump in as a brief update for the Economic Development and Sustainability Committee. Uh, in, in Mike's absence, um. They, together with myself and the Community Initiatives Director, plan to um, review the. Uh, bids we received for the community center, um. Um. Yes, concept design, thank you, words, it's late, um. In the very near future and come back hopefully in the month of November, depending on um, Mike's progress and availability. Uh, to suggest an award uh, for the council uh, for that bid process.
Thank you. Down to the public, this is your two-minute uh, public comment session. You're allowed to address the council, state your name and address. Seeing none via Zoom. Absolutely. As a member of the.
I'm clerk.
I wanted to give a last reminder that absentee ballot ballots are available until Thursday, November second. Um, by request at the town office with application, and we do have an online um. Form as well, and also you can call via phone if you're unable to come out. Just keep in mind of the mailing process will be a couple days, so November second, last day for. Uh, absentee ballot request.
Thank you.
I just want to take a minute to thank, as a employee of the school department, I just wanted to thank our public. Safety departments today for um. Their help at school, we um, Fire Chief Cody came over to visit us and we had a couple police officers who had a. Um, most of the day presence in our schools just to reassure the staff and, and the students with everything that had happened in Lewiston. And I, I'm just very grateful and I would just like to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you, Council McGowan. I'd, one more thing to say before we wrap things up tonight. Um, it's my last meeting as your chairman. I would like to. Thank this council. For your trust. For your support. For your friendships. For your feedback. Um, I'd like to thank the citizens of Millinocket for allowing me and affording me the opportunity to do that as their counselor. I um. Took it with great pride and it was an honor to serve you at this capacity. I really do appreciate it and. I know that everybody agrees all the time as citizens to council and as other counselors to other counselors, but once again, it was a, it was a pleasure. Serving with, as your chairman, I hope that I've done you a good service. Hope, hope I made um, at least some of the community proud. With that being said, I will look for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Six zero. Have a good evening.